Becky, do you know how to read this?
Um, Josh would be the best one to talk to about it. I mean, it's just basically broke down to what time in New York was running.
Very. Well, that's definitely something I guess.
And that was very detailed.
It was. I was not expecting.
Yeah, it's nice though.
We had a soft water filter put into our house. And the guy who did it, he was laying under the house with his head stretched out, his head against the furnace run because it's crawl space and trying to get it all here. So I just wanted to make sure it was all good. Is it inline or is it a tank?
It's a tank.
I, I, we, this is the first house we've ever owned. It had inline hot water heater.
You like this.
Best thing ever. Never have to worry about hot water.
Especially with teenagers.
Yeah. Both of them can take half hour showers and we'll get in, it'll be piping hot. I mean, and also, I mean, you can take it, hot water thinks about this big round, six feet tall roughly, this thing is just a box on the side of the wall. Takes so little space. And since we got gas, it's economical to do. Yeah.
We'll start with the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in our own. I've asked Pastor Linda to say a prayer.
Our heavenly Father, Thursday is Thanksgiving. Please help us remember that we all have a lot to be thankful for. We have our families, we have our friends, we have so much to be thankful for. Please bless everyone here this evening, give them a blessed Thanksgiving. We ask all of us in the name of your son, Jesus Christ, our Lord, our Savior. Amen.
As we get started, I'll pass these out to you all. I'm curious, we were talking, we had talked about lamp posts at the community center and what I'd like to get from you all is what kind of style do you all think would be best for there so I can bring more specific ones. There's multi-lamp, three lamp, four lamp, five lamp, single lamp. Those are just several different, just four, five different ones of multi-lamps, whether that's hanging down or looking up. I looked to see if we could get one that kind of matched the clock itself and there's nothing that really matches the clock per se. Most of them are just more rounded, a few of them have square or square type bases, but the predominance is, as you see in front of you. Looking for a little bit more specificness on options to bring.
Do they all have the light sensors? Like the center one, it looks like it has a light sensor so it goes off during the day and on at night.
So any of them that don't have the light sensor, the light sensor itself can be purchased for about twenty-five dollars and added to in any of them, so it would be a dusk till dawn light.
When, when you got these pictures, did it tell you, like each individual, how much lighting it gave?
Um, each of them do have different lighting capacities. If we get one that's bulb related and then the bulb that we put in it will give, it will be dependent on how much light it gives. Some of them, like the fourth one here is just LED built-in light already, where some of the other ones, it's just light bulbs and that's in accordance to whichever force or power we get for it.
And just say the middle one?
Which one? This one?
Middle one.
Yeah. I'll take the, I like the middle one too, so you don't have to buy the extra part.
Okay. I like it too.
Okay.
So we're back, just watch on the corner.
So we'll just move forward with that one then. Thank you. Um, for approval of the consent agenda, it was pointed out that there is a misspelling of Sherman in last meeting's minutes. It's spelled here Sherman, it should be Schu-erman, S-C-H-U-E-R-M-A-N-N. Correct?
Don't pronounce his name, it's just spelled differently.
So if we could get a motion to approve the consent agenda with the correction to the minutes.
I'll make a motion to approve consent agenda with the amendment to the last name.
I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion?
Yeah, I have a question. Um, we put out bids, right, for the water department for the roofing?
We haven't put anything out yet, I don't think.
And then, um, Brandon Johnson came and looked at it?
Brandon came and looked at it to see what it's gonna take, but we have not heard that coming yet.
Sure.
Okay. All in favor of approving the consent agenda with the adjustment? That's unanimous. Chief Administrator and Departmental Reports.
Um, I need the rest of uncollectible accounts approved so we can write them off the books. The ones that are over twenty-five dollars will go to the set-off program and the others will, a list will be kept and if those people ever move back to town and try to get water serviced, then that'll be collected before the waters turn on again. The water bill follows the person off the plan.
Is it, is the motion to approve uncollectible?
But just, yes, to write them off, that way we can get them off the books and they don't show up every time we run a report.
I'll make a motion to approve the set-off of the uncollectible accounts.
I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor? That's unanimous.
I don't have anything else, I don't think I have.
Chief Weston, did you have anything today?
I have something for the, I asked him.
I'm first. If he can go first, because I'm probably gonna be in there.
Okay. Chief Snyder?
Uh, between November first and November twenty-fourth, we've had a hundred and sixty-five calls for service. We've written fifteen citations, we've had forty-eight traffic stops, two arrests, five drug cases, fifteen reports and twelve call-outs. Um, right now, we're doing the step grant for Thanksgiving, which concentrates on seat belts, distracted driving, texting and driving, that goes till the twenty-ninth of November. And we have done thirty-seven hours worth of fundraising for Angel Tree between the police department, the Pleasant Fire Department and the Lynn County Fire Department nine-twenty. Um, in total, we've raised ten thousand dollars at the present moment with a, that includes a three thousand dollar grant from Walmart.
To start off with, just to keep everybody updated on the ISO progress, I have received back from ISO their plan that they want me to give them, and I have give it to my standard operating guideline committee and we are coming up, basically, we need to come up with a plan by January sixteenth to have back to them of how we are going to correct the issues that are, that need to be corrected. So we are in the process of putting a year-long plan together. Uh, right now, there's, you know, some months, there's going to be two mandatory trainings, some months, there's only going to be one mandatory training. Now, I will tell you, there are going to be more trainings than that, but it's going to be just people wanting to come in and go over stuff that we've already gone over or stuff that we need to go over, more of a one-on-one, two-on-one or two-on-two type training because some people respond better that way than having ten people and everybody talking and things like that. So there, you know, if you see us multiple days at the fire station in a week's time, you know, we are doing what we need to do to get through this. But, um, we have a plan of all but maybe, is it two months, Josh, that we have, we have, I think it's, we have everything but two months planned out for the year on what we're going to train on, how we're going to go about doing it. We also have to add in there, we have, according to our automatic aid agreement with the Lynn County Fire Department, we have to have two trainings a year with them. So, you know, possibly us going to them one time or them coming to us one time or something along the lines of that, that we've got to add in there as well. Um, and in the ISO stuff, they're more concerned about structure fire things, but also, we have to do, we have to cover CPR, we have to cover, um, vehicle fires, we have to cover thing, you know, maybe some light extrication, you know, hopefully in the city limits of Pleasant and somebody's not going to be going fast enough to necessarily have to have the jaws of life from the county fire department to come to get them out. Maybe we can do some light extrication type stuff with what we have on the truck or potential, what we can get at a nominal fee of not very much money. So that's kind of our overall plan of moving forward for the next year in the types of trainings that we're going to be doing. Um, and, and we have things in there. Um, we are in progress of writing our standard operating guidelines, standard operating procedures, whatever you want to call them. Um, I met with the mayor today about some clarification on a few things, on how we have a, a document completed, but I wanted to clarify before I send it to him and then we can go from there on getting that sent to him and then he can, once it's all approved and, or checked and then the city attorney checks at it, checks it out, then they can get it to you guys to read through and see what you think as well. So we do have a SOG written, I think it's, I think we've shortened it to like seventy-three pages instead of ninety-some, so, you know, we're trying to do, we're trying to cover any possibility that can possibly come up, but we know there's going to be things in there that we're not looking at or we're not going to be able to see in the future for. So, um, that is all of the update I have and then we'll get into the part that we don't want to get into.
Gotcha. I have something and, um, I want to make sure, um, that I read it. So you all know how important the firefighter in the department is to me. I have taken the time to talk to some of the firefighters to see how things are going. I went to open communication with them. I have asked many questions of the ISO is going and where we stand currently. I have asked about the SOGs as well. I've asked the standard operation guidelines, how it is coming along and if anything or anyone wants to change it. I have been informed that the mayor wants to change the firefighters not to be considered employees of the city. He, the mayor, said that firefighters are considered re-remuneration, not actual paid employees. The re-remuneration means paid. As far as I know, they are employees of the city. They are just like any other employees we have. Do you see any of them working every day on fires? Typically, no, you don't see any of them working every day on fires. That would be a sad thing for them to do. You, you see them out doing trainings, also in the public when, when there are events going on, they show up when they're most needed. Given any time of the day or night, they were, will be there. If you see them out in public, they will most likely stop and talk to you if you are asked questions or just say hi. My opinion is the city firefighters are employees, just like any of our other employees that we have in the city working. So by me saying this, I think we need to pay our firefighters for the time that they put in for the fires, per call. If they stay longer on the call, then they should get paid. Not getting paid is not, for, not getting paid for doing it, something is just not for an option for this one, just like we pay any of our, any of other employees. Our firefighters that put their lives online for us every day and every night, if they would get hurt paying, hurt, praying that they, that nothing happens to them, nor will, nor am I mean saying that I want something to happen to them because I'm not, is the city going to pay for the recovery or the doctor bills? You can't sit there and tell me that if the, any other employees would get hurt, the city doesn't pay for them. Volunteer or paid per call, not changed status, they are considered employees. Even if they are called volunteers or call or on-call, if the city directs the work and provides the tools, the law treats them as employees. Under USD Department of Labor, USDOL rules, under the Fair Labor Sanders Act, FLLSA, paid per call, city firefighters are almost always considered employees, not independent contractors. The USDOL uses the economy reality test, which focuses on whether the workers are commonly dependent on the employer firefighter, even per pay, per call, nearly always meaning definition of employees because control. They have trainings, they go on fires, they have safety procedures, they have the following conduct calls, they are employees. Firefighters is a city core public safety function, which is essential to all the businesses in our town. They are employees. They do not own a fire department or advertise for clients or have investments of any kind to the fire department. They are employees. They have no real opportunities for profit or loss. They are not contractors, which can lose money or make money. They are employees. City provides tools and equipment, that means the city provides trucks, gear, radio, PPE, this all provides by the city. If they were contractors, then they would have their own stuff. They, they do not. So again, that puts them, the firefighters as employees. Firmacy of relationship, even if they are on-call, many stay with the department for a long time. USDOL considers this as a sign of employment, not contracting. Bottom line, USDOL likely classifies paid-for-call firefighters for the city fire department employees under the FSLA. Both Kansas law and USDOL rules point strongly to employee status. I am sure by now you all know what I'm asking for. Is the firefighter being considered employee for the city? They are required to fill out a W four federal and a K four Kansas. Tax form is one of the strongest possible indicates that cities itself considers. The firefighters as employees, not just volunteer, which again makes them employees. I have called other cities like Racine, they consider their firefighters employees under the, um, work, under workman's comp. Also firefighters in Fort Scott consider them as employees as well for part-time. I am not sure where the mayor is coming from or why he wants to, them to be considered, why they, why he wants them to be considered contractors, but they are not contractors at all. If they were contractors, then that would have to go through a third party to get them to be that. The firefighters would have to provide their own stuff for fires. To my knowledge, they don't provide their own stuff. Before I vote, I would like for, to make sure that each council member remembers what our firefighters do for our, our community. By making a firefighter part-time, will be covered under the workman's comp. Per call, there's, there shouldn't be any reason for, so at this time, I'd like to make a motion to amend the city code book to that, to make the city firefighters a part-time employee of the city.
Um, Rochelle, can I say something on this? Your information, a lot of it is wrong. They are not considered contractors and they would be getting ten ninety-nines. Well, they are considered volunteers, but they get paid, I should know because I just did their payroll today, they get paid per call.
Well, they're, I would, I just made a motion for them to be a part-time city employee.
So is that a motion for an ordinance to be drafted? Because it would take an ordinance to change the city code?
Yes.
Okay. Um, so now there is an ordinance on the table to make the fire department not a volunteer fire department, but make them employed?
A part-time.
Part-time employed. Is there a second? Motion dies for lack of second.
And I have to say, I'm really sorry to the firefighters. I tried.
Well, hold on there. So my understanding is that you want to change their classification from volunteer?
I'm not, I'm not trying to change anything.
So what is the remunification that you're talking about?
The firefighters, according to law, can receive a minimal compensation for what they do. I'm not talking about changing anything. Uh, what I'm talking about is the original SOGs that were handed to me to look at called the volunteer firefighters employees of the city. They are not employees of the city.
Why are they not employees of the city?
Because we have a volunteer fire department. We do not have an employee department.
Do they have W, do they have to fill out W four?
Yes.
That doesn't change the fact that we have a volunteer.
Do they have to fill out a W four?
Do they have to?
Yes, they have to.
Do they have to fill out a K four?
Because they are not contracts.
Correct, I'm not saying they're contractors. But they have to fill out a K four, correct?
Apparently is.
Okay, so that makes them employees?
Yes.
If they were pure volunteers, they would be paid what's called a nominal fee, which is roughly four dollars. Since they're, they're paid thirty-five dollars per call for the three hours, that averages out to eleven dollars an hour. Therefore, they cannot be classified as volunteers. They are part-time, paid per call employees.
Um, one thing about this, I spent some time today talking to different fire departments, talking to different cities as well. Um, the city of Racine, um, talking to Jody at the city of Racine, um, they consider their firefighters volunteers. Now let me get into this a little bit more. She said they have several volunteer groups in their city. Now, my question was, if we are a volunteer, are we covered under workman's comp if something happens on a scene, getting that taken care of? What she explained to me was that the city has to decide in all of these volunteer groups who is going to be covered under their workman's comp umbrella and who is not. Um, she says the way that they claim their firefighters up there are what it would be considered full-time volunteers because they have a expectation of doing a job, even if you are a volunteer. You know, if you're a volunteer, you can, you cannot go do that job if you don't want to. They have an expectation of doing this job as a volunteer and that is where the, the city has to decide whether that volunteer group is covered under workman's comp. Um, basically, what this is going to boil down to, as I've talked with my firefighters and we are writing these SOGs, I'm trying to do the best to make sure that my firefighters are protected, but also the city is protected in doing this, you know? Um, so what I'm, what our major concern to start with is, we want to have the same protections as other, every other city employee.
You do.
And that is, and, and.
You are on my insurance policy.
Um, and that is the protections. So, uh, whenever we get into that, you know, we'll get into the protections and everything, we just want to make sure that this is, we're covered under this because if we're a volunteer person, we are just going out doing something, we would, we would necessarily be, um, if something happened, we would have to take care of by ourself.
You know, because the volunteer firefighter with the appointment to the position is a little bit different than just someone saying, I want to volunteer for the city to do something, um, a single job or something. Uh, it's a different process within that, they get a nominal fee and that's part of it, uh, just within itself, they're not considered part-time employees.
And that's, that is what I got from Racine and I was going to reach out to some others and trying to work a full-time job and get some of this stuff taken care of. I just did not get a lot of things covered. Um, Dennis, would you have anything that you would like to add to this at this point?
At this point, not really, no. I think you.
So as, at, you know, maybe something, maybe something in moving forward.
However, however they move forward.
My, my, my concern, and this, we don't do our fire, fired, our firefighter job for money and you can ask anybody in my department, they would do it for nothing. But if we are going to get a nominal fee, what I don't want to get into, and the reason why I'm trying to write this into our standard operating guidelines, is if we say a firefighter gets this much comp, and I'm going to use the word compensation instead of pay, um, or for this amount of time, and then after that, then you, the firefighter should receive a compensation per hour after that if it is a lengthy fire situation that we're on. So in this, what I don't want to happen is a firefighter comes to me and says, if we are just volunteers with nothing to protect the firefighter itself, if you, you know, I have a problem with what I got paid and I come in here with the firefighter and we talk with Becky and we have whoever's going to be in this, you know, what I don't want to happen is, okay, if you don't like what I'm not offering you, I'm not going to pay you anything. That's what I'm, I'm trying to avoid in putting this into the standard operating guidelines because I, I know we are all adults. Because I know we are all adults, but there are times that things are said, words are flung, that we don't necessarily mean.
I have a comment on this. If you guys would have questions about this and someone would come and talk to me about it, a lot of this would even have to be discussed because they are covered under our insurance policy. We have been paying them. It would save a lot of it, they would just come and ask me.
So my question is, why are we changing wording?
We're not changing wording.
If renumeration is the same thing as pay, why are we changing it in SOG? What's the point of that?
Okay, we're not, well, first of all, we're not changing any SOG or anything else. Because there is no SOGs for the fire department at the moment. They're constructing them. And in the way that it was worded in the original, the first draft that I looked at, the wording was wrong and it would put the city at liability with the way it's written. Because the fire department that the city has per city code is a volunteer fire department, where according to the national and international fire code, firefighters can get nominal fee, nominal pay, for their services as a volunteer firefighter. But that does not make them employees of the city with all the same employee handbook and everything else that the city employees have. It's a different category as what they are doing. That's why it is a volunteer fire department.
Okay, so why changing from pay to renumeration? Isn't that something that you instructed them to change?
The wording, you can use nominal fee, you can use nominal pay, but to just say that we're paying the firefighters a certain amount, that is contrary to, remunerization is.
Is pay.
Is pay.
Okay.
So why not just use pay?
So you can use. We're fighting over semantics here, which is ridiculous. Use nominal, it is, it is. Because remunerization is what they get. That is a nominal fee, a nominal pay.
Nominal fee is.
A nominal pay. So a nominal pay is what could be used.
What is not, can you give me definition of nominal fee or nominal pay?
Something that does not exceed a normal, or an over-normal.
They are getting paid the same as they voice out.
I know, but what, here's what I fear is that we're changing definitions.
I don't have nothing to yarmulke.
I know, I'm just putting this out here. It feels as though we're changing definitions or what we're identifying it as in order to skirt certain things. And I don't understand why we can't just say in plain language why we have to go into renumeration. Why can't we say fire? The volunteer fire department is paid per call, which is standard for Kansas fire departments. And not go into the semantics of, well, it's the same thing. Yes, it is, but why are we changing it?
So we can put the phrase per call in there, they get X amount of nominal pay.
So we're not changing their employment status, correct?
We're not, they're volunteers. They're not employees.
So a nominal fee is about four dollars.
It's a nominal pay.
You can set it if you want to put it in your book. Just say that you are getting, the pay is thirty-five dollars for.
For the callouts and then after three hours.
After three hours, it's ten dollars an hour and the chief's is forty-five. Just put it that way and then you don't have to worry about any other wording. Just put the pay.
Yeah, just put it plain and simple, which is what the discussion that I had with Chief Wisdom at lunch was.
Well, originally, in our first draft, that's what it said. Paid, you know, pay per call up to three hours and then pay per hour after that. And that is where it was brought because I had somebody else in the meeting with me that after we got done, we got to talking about it and it was wanting to be changed to compensation or something else besides pay. This is where we're back to arguing over which adjective we want or syllable we want to, whatever we want to call this of, what word we want to put in there is kind of what we're arguing over right now. And we're adults, we've got to move past this.
Can you just put pay so much per run?
Well, that's fine, yeah. I just feel that this is an attempt to bypass labor laws and consolidate the authority under the mayor. The term has no legal meaning under federal Kansas laws. If firefighters perform employee duties, they are employees, no matter how we label them. Misclassification exposes Pleasanton to wage claims, penalties, tax violations, and workers' comp liability. Before any change is considered, we need a written legal opinion on this, citing the statutory authority for such reclassification and a full explanation of the legal risk to the city and to the government body.
So what reclassification are we doing?
What you want to change it to? I'm not a hundred percent sure what.
I'm not wanting to change it to anything other than what it is, a volunteer fire department, according to our city codes.
So we're still back to the original question, why are we changing the wording?
What wording are we changing? Because there's no wording to be changed at the moment. The SOGs are being written and I caution them against calling them employees, saying they have the employee handbook and so forth because Pleasanton has per city code, a volunteer fire department. All the wording needs to classify within the SOGs for a volunteer fire department. Unless we change the type of fire department that the city has. So at this particular point, you're arguing that I'm trying to change wordings in an SOG that doesn't exist. It's being constructed. At lunch today with Chief Wisdom, I talked about this a little bit more because I realized in talking with him that they misunderstood. Like I was saying, remove all pay and everything from there. No, it needs to be listed what the volunteers department is, what they're getting for callouts and what that listing is. But they can't put in there that, well, they're city employees and they have all the same other things as city employees because they're not part-time employees per labor laws because it's a volunteer fire department that the city of Pleasanton has.
But also on that same note, they are employees because they're having taxes withheld. If they were not having taxes withheld, they'd be classified as pure volunteers. So that's why I request a legal opinion on this.
So we'll have to get the legal opinion on it and figure out whether we have been doing it wrong in accordance to our city codes.
Jeff.
Or what? I'm good. Okay. But I'm not trying to change anything.
Well, overall, the fire department feels like it has progressed positively in several ways. Where we are moving strides in short, you know, long strides in short amount of time. But, you know, this is all going to boil down to, all the way from the very top of the city, all the way down to the firefighter themselves. We're all going to have to figure out how to work together. And, you know, everybody in between. Now, I do want to say, if my firefighters bring something to me to ask about, I'm going to ask. Even if I don't necessarily want to, I'm going to ask. So, you know, I can try to come up with, you know, try to talk to people and come up with answers before we get to this point. My biggest concern is, as a firefighter, we just want to have the same protections as every other employee of the city. And I'm not saying we have to be employees. I just want the protections of that city employee status. Not saying that I'm wanting to get people required to get paid minimum wage or whatever when we're training four and five days a week or whatever.
Rest assured, they are covered under our insurance.
So that is the big thing right now that we want to get taken care of. So. I hope the citizens of Pleasanton and everybody in the city of Pleasanton and the administration, all the way down to the fire department, I hope we can continue to work together to make positive strides. That is what I want. And we just have to cross a few hiccups as we go. Thank you for your time. Do you guys have anything else?
Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, Jackie?
When was this subject, is this a subject that is in your agenda? This that we just discussed, volunteer firefighter stuff? You didn't know anything about it. You knew something about it because you had a job. Suddenly you write this big dissertation and you have the same line of subject on this thing.
Correct.
My question on this thing is, you guys seem like you discuss this thing.
Nope.
No, I haven't. You can file a court request. Me and Rochelle have had zero conversation.
I don't talk to anybody.
I am.
I'm not one of anybody up here.
I received my information from a firefighter. So they gave me information they had. That is all. I did my own research and that is it. But we have had zero conversation about this.
It just seems so kinky. I'm sorry, I appreciate that.
And I, I honest to God did not have, I don't talk to Aaron, I don't talk to anybody.
I saw one before when Bill had had an issue and you popped off on the same thing. I just want to be very, and I can't remember what the subject was. It was, I can't remember. But I just want to caution you guys, please do not do that because I feel like we're getting very close to crossing the line on Cora and Kansas Open meetings issues here.
So I'll put on the record, all I had was a conversation with the firefighter. That is all. I haven't talked to Bill, I haven't talked to Alex, and I haven't talked to Rochelle. So everything that I came up with was from information that was given to me by a firefighter. So all of this information I have right here is on my own recognizance and I haven't talked to Rochelle at all.
And I got my, I mean, I did all my own research and I talked to probably a different firefighter. I don't know, but.
And we have to be very careful about serial meetings when you've got someone feeding the entire council information, that one person feeding you and then feeding you and feeding you. Serial meetings are not legal either. And we have had that at the commission meetings. So you've got to be very careful when we've got someone out here that's feeding you guys, trying to get this stuff and you're bypassing your city administrators. Just FYI.
Understood. Dam repair at Steady Lake?
I did get ahold of Jason Hoskinson and he said that he has met with a geo-tech engineer and they're developing a design approach to the dam repair that'll be a long-term solution. And he should have a packet of information course in December on getting that repaired specifications. And also in case anyone sees them in town, there'll be surveyors here starting next month whether committing to start on the cost share program, starting to get the surveys done to start that. I do have one other thing, just in case you don't know. Our grader arrived today. It's been checked over. We're very happy with the condition of it. Public Works will be cleaning it, changing the oil. We have one hydraulic hose to repair and then make them to start to use it. We did get it through federal surplus. So if anyone wants to stop in and look at it, we can kind of come back. Yeah, it's really in good shape.
Excellent. We have Dean Johnson. Is he here? Hello? Not here. Dump truck repair.
So we picked the dump truck up to rush trucking in the city. They called, they said they had it fixed. They got it to the Drexel exit and it died and we had to have it towed back up there. The estimate in your agenda is what it's going to take to fix it. And I know that the bypass was under my speed spending limit, that I didn't feel comfortable doing a bypass without you guys putting some input in here on if you want to spend another forty-four hundred dollars on it on top of what we've already.
So something else broke?
They said it was a wiring problem and I'm sorry, I'm not.
The engine actuator power?
Alex, do you know?
He put a note here that says, you know, safety wise, the circuit is already fused. It's the engine actuator power that powers the exhaust gas recirculation. What it could do is cause it to be sluggish or slow or have bursts of power if not fixed or if they bypass it. A thousand and sixty dollars is what it would cost if to actually fix it would be the forty-four hundred.
Did they fix that one time already though?
Not this far.
This is something else that went wrong with it on the way back.
And where's the, where's the money come from?
This, the dump truck comes out of the wastewater.
Do we have it?
If it is in there, we really don't have a choice. We have to, I mean, it's still sitting up there. We need to fix it one way or the other and get it back so they can use it.
It's not doing us any good setting up there. I would ask if we have potentially looked at inland, which is another diesel repair shop not too far from where Rush is. I think their per hour service rate is about a hundred dollars an hour less than what Rush's is. I don't think that applies for this time. I think we're pretty much stuck with Rush, but we do need to get it fixed.
Yeah, we had the three different people come here to look at it and they also had to take it up there, so.
An EGR, it sounds like basically it's an EGR delete that they're doing. I don't know. We have to get it fixed.
I say if they're going to do it, they're going to, they should do it right. So I'll go with optional line of wiring harness for two thousand parts, or two thousand dollars for parts and ten hours of labor, two hundred and forty an hour. Total forty-four hundred dollars.
I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the repair for forty-four hundred dollars to the dump truck. Any other discussion? All in favor? Passage unanimous? Approved Dollar General, two thousand twenty-six CMB application.
I'm making a motion for Dollar Generals, two thousand twenty-six CMB application.
I'll second.
It's moved and seconded, any discussion? All in favor? Passage unanimous? We're going to hear from our student representative to the council.
Hi everyone. I've been working hard alongside Sarah Epps, Adria Sullins, Dawn Epps, Sarah Colley, Ethan Saban, Lou Virgaldo, so sorry if I said that wrong. And plenty of other amazing people. I'm so excited to introduce you all to my ongoing project. Introducing the Simple Sanctuary, where good things happen. Your space to pause, play, and be. An after-school program held on Mondays, Wednesdays, and Fridays, containing three blocks spanning three forty-five to six fifteen PM. The first block, the academic block, containing thirty minutes of homework time during focus for students needing any help on any subject. This is the time to ask questions, formulate discussions, and grow her mind. The second block, the learning block, a full hour of learning. Students will learn necessary skills and fun ones too. Whether it's painting, cooking, or even a little bit of origami, these students are able to push past the limits in their mind to create something amazing. The third block, the activity block, an hour of fun. These students will be able to get involved in board games, karaoke, movies, sports, and plenty more. This is their time to, and I cannot stress this enough, be a kid. Students will be given a snack during the first block and for anything more, they will have to purchase limited concessions and all proceeds will go back to the program. None of this is set in stone yet, we have to still finalize many details, but our goal is to have this up and running in late January, early February. Right now, we are getting the legality pieces squared off, but we are also looking for adult and student supervisors to run the program. Also, in the next couple of weeks, Dawn Epps will be sending out a survey for the parents of USD three forty-four. Be on the lookout for that. Please react, please reach out to me if you'd like to be a part of the program. My contact information on the back of these flyers, if you need one, they're right here, there's like a few of them. Um, thank you guys and, um, Thanksgiving is this week and I wanted to, um, tell you guys all I am thankful for, each and every one of you guys and I'm thankful for this opportunity to sit on, and sit in on these council meetings and share information with you guys and create this whole thing. So thank you guys so much.
Thank you. Other questions on any of that? Aaron, did you have anything else?
No.
Rochelle?
Um, yeah, can, um, I would like to do another, um, for the, uh, light up main street, for the businesses to, um, decorate their businesses and, um, their home, the home, homeowners decorate there too and for the first prize winner free water and the second prize a half, half of the water bill. And it cannot be anybody of the, um, council, sorry Kenny, you're out this year.
I'll keep mine in work.
And, yeah, and, and, uh, no city workers either. So I'd like to make a motion to have, um, the water for free and half, half a water bill for the main street and city, for the lights.
So it's a half for the business and, and whole for the?
Well, first prize would be of, uh, yeah, first prize for, uh, free water.
For each of them or, or business and house?
Did we do that last year for each of them? Can we do, can we do one for free water for the business and then free water for the house and then second prize, half? For business and half for water?
Okay, so the motion is for the lighting contest?
Yeah.
Um, Christmas lighting contest with a hundred percent for first prize for a month of water and fifty percent for second prize for a month of water for both business and house?
Yes.
Business and residential?
Cause it was so pretty last year, everybody participated.
Okay, is there a second?
I'll say it.
Any discussion? All in favor? Passage unanimous?
Yeah, and did we, um, get the railing and the lights for the community center?
The railing is up and the lights are going in tomorrow.
Perfect, and then Becky, are we gonna do, um, give you some names for the water?
Yes, I can, you guys.
So, because we've always done it every year, to give names to Becky for free water for people in need. Do we need a motion? Do you agree? That's up.
Bill?
Uh, no, a question on the free water, is that a, uh, a once-in-a-while thing or, I, I'm not familiar, I, it blew past me.
No, you're good, we did it last year for Christmas to have everybody light up the, the main streets.
No, I understand that, you were talking about.
Oh yeah, we do it every year for people that.
disenfranchised people, the T-Blue have issues paying their water bill. Um, city council members can submit a name to the council, I'll be on a list and then, um, somebody chooses, I don't remember who chooses. I think the mayor usually chooses two or three names and they get one month of free water, I'll give one month.
Yeah, so we just give it to, um, you know, Becky or whatever and we all submit, and then they probably all get it or whatever, I don't know.
I was in Charleston last Christmas, I missed you.
No, you're good.
Alex?
Yes, I should do, uh, I was, we just wondered what it would take to get like the city their own BMO? Uh, when we was up there at the Eltry, I mean, I heard people talking that they didn't have cash, but they had BMO. Uh, and that they wanted, I mean, like to donate, but, I mean, I didn't know what that would take. And, and then, and also we use it for like the Sixth Street Park, um, in this, to have the city's own BMO, I didn't know.
We have that set up for Sixth Street Park, okay?
Okay, it's, I, I mean, I didn't know like on like the Eltry.
Do they use it for like Angel Tree and such?
No, I don't know, I'm not real techy when you come and set it up, but I can check with the bank and see. As long as it's on one of the separate funds like that, I don't have a problem with them, I don't want them to have access to remaining hours.
Everybody agree on that?
It's bothering me, I know it's an accounting problem.
Uh-huh. Mildly speaking. Okay, anything else? I will entertain a motion for adjournment.
I'll make a motion to it here.
Oh, I second that.
Oh, yeah.
We move to second, all in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned. Chief Wisdom?